Anybody ready to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all? We call meeting order. Roll call.
Mayor Westover.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes. Do we have anybody here for public forum?
Yeah, that'd be me.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it simple. I'm not very well prepared, as you know. Want to welcome Jim to the council. Especially excited to have someone that's a business owner on, which is what I wanted to talk to you about tonight. I just have some concerns about a few things that have gone on as far as affecting the businesses. Five years ago, the council took steps to revitalize Main Street. And at the time, a housing committee was formed that kind of did a lot of economic development, not just housing. They worked on the incentives that you have today. They worked on the signings that's, you know, on the businesses. They looked at parking. They did a lot of work. So incentives have proven to be very popular with people, with the businesses. I had several businesses comment on it, but, you know, because I didn't think incentives were really... They're nice. They're nothing super funding, you know? But anyway, they've been very popular. Our current businesses, the success we've had down there has increased our tax base, which helps everybody in the community. They've increased their revenue to the city budget in the way of their property tax that they pay, the utilities that they use, the sales tax they generate, the hotel motel tax they generate. And all of that helps every resident in Lakeview. I think it has helped to keep our property taxes from going up yet. I think it has helped you to delay some of the utility increases that have been tough. So it's just that a couple of things I've noticed. Like, a while back, the cardboard issue. I listened to the council talk about the cardboard. There was too much cardboard being put at the local... Sorry, was it what I got out of it? And just was that the businesses uptown were putting their cardboard over there and it was creating an overflow. And so the council talked about several things. They talked about putting on another dumpster. They talked about taking it out more often, which was all great. But the final thing that I remember out of that meeting was, the final action they took was to send the businesses a letter and tell them to just stop using it. And I just thought, did you even talk to them? You have retail, those retail businesses uptown generate a lot of, you know, Melton's and Home Bodies and they have stuff coming in boxes all the time. And I thought, you're not really offering that much. And maybe someone went and talked to them. I don't know. That was just one of the things I noticed. I just think later, we had the deal with the property over here that a new business wanted and the exorbitant price that was put on it instead of wanting that business to succeed and the revenue that that business is going to generate. I just think you're focused too much on the revenue today and not the revenue that comes from those businesses. And then, of course, finally, it's the business that the Beckman and the Hanky property or family had done it with. And apparently, that's now going to be pulled. At the time, we really needed that. The city campground had not the staffing. They didn't have the facility to store stuff. They wanted nothing to do with that. And so it was amenity that we thought we needed and they came with a plan. They had a five-year plan. They worked with Region 12 and the city. So in the beginning, it was $20 a month rent for six months out of the year they had to pay, free utilities, which is really low. But it was like, let's get this business going. Let's see how it works. They were interested in, you know, increasing, you know, as they could. They took out a loan, obviously. So then, two years ago, the price went from $20 a month to $75 a month and they were charged for 12 months out of the year, even though they're only a business for six of the months. So then they had to pay electrical, too. Just, and then they came to the council the second year and said, we'd like to have golf carts. The bikes aren't as big as we thought they would be. And that was denied. Like, anyone would notice two more free for golf carts around this community. I wouldn't. So again, it's, I just think you're not looking at the revenue. You're looking at this revenue and not looking at what comes. I had friends come here from Des Moines, rather than other... Pay for a week, they stayed at the hotel. They shopped here, they ate here, they rented bikes, they rented kayaks. So that's a whole week here. And, you know, I just think now we're losing that kind of an amenity that we would have had. Again, I, you know, I hope that when things come up like that that affect the business community, I hope that you guys will, at least someone go talk to them. Go see, what can we do to help you? Because they are our lifeline, not just the city lifeline. They are the whole community lifeline. We lose a lot of revenue if we lose businesses. And by the time you know you're losing them, it's usually too late. So anyway, I'm just hoping that as things come up, you'll look at it, take a special look, talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Becky.
Anyone else? Can we move on to the consent agenda? My way, thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Second?
One second.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Do we have a public works report?
All right. Electrical, we did some locates. We removed a meter so a resident could add siding and then put it back. Placed wire on the house after the owner changed electrician, did some chainsaw maintenance, reeder meetings, worked on wood chipper, some more locates. Worked on the lights at the water tower, cut some trees, pulled a meter and replaced it because it wasn't working right. We finally got the white plow truck up and running. The starter has now been changed out. She's good to go. We fixed the lights on the yellow dump truck. We did some coal patch on Lakewood Drive and Crescent Park, started the brush pile on fire, pushed up the brush pile, cleaned the backhoe whenever you start it on fire and do that. It's, it dirts the backhoe pretty well, so you got to clean it in between. Cut down some more trees. I started to move the dirt that was in the pile out there off to the side so now when we do it, we just burn brush and it's not a whole bunch of dirt piled up there to make it a little bit quicker and easier for us. We changed outs, a meter out in Dixieland, turned the water back on for a resident trying to find a leak. Currently, we're at 16 trees to include an additional three trunks. And then we jetted a manhole this morning and then Cricket went and took his CDL test and has passed all three, so now he has his permit. We are just waiting for the class to open up so he can go get his other one. I am currently still studying for mine. We got a quote for replacing, at the last council meeting, I talked about the sirens going to a radio read. And the quote for it, to do all five of them is $18,250. I have the quote and the information if you would like to see it. Looking at different funding options for it, reached out to some people to see if there's some grants or something like that for it. We can work with them for hazard mitigation and it is part of the funding that is available through hazard mitigation if they have money to give. So we're going to continue working down that path and working forward on that to get all of them switched from the telephone wire to the radio communication. We'll make it easier for everybody to set them, like, will we have daylight savings time or if there's an issue or something like that. We're still waiting on the starter box for the one out here and then figuring out what we're going to do for the Ice House Point One. If we go to the radio communication, that fixes that one instantly and gets rid of the radio or the telephone communication. Unless you all tell me, just tell them to order it and get it coming.
I'm looking, I'm going to see where we're at with the current budget so that I can see if there's a place that we can pull that money from. Otherwise, I mean, we're looking at, you know, options of getting Ice House Point up and going and then getting this one repaired and then maybe break it up into a couple of different phases that we might seek a grant, you know, through the Sac County Foundation or something like that. The thing with the hazard mitigation is that you have to wait for FEMA dollars to be available and we're still waiting on two generator, dollars for two generators that haven't come about yet. So we've basically been approved for those, but we just, they get away for the funding to become available.
And it is something that we can do, one, this year, do another one next year. The big expense is you got to buy the transmitter for the one, but then it's the other ones set up, so the price is a lot less for each one after you do that. He's still supposed to be giving me a quote on what it would cost for each individual unit after we buy the first one. That way, we can have it broke down 100%. The quote that we currently have is to do all five at the same time.
That's a quote of $18,250.
Yes, sir.
In case the trees are cut and those are all ash?
Not all. Majority are. Some of the other ones are just dead trees that need to come down. But I would tell you, the majority of them are ash trees.
Very good. Thank you. Chris, do you have anything we can share from the police department?
No, we had 838 calls for service over the last two months. 332 of those were our community policing initiatives. We have, we are participating in step and we've been doing that over the last couple of months during certain times. We'll post any times that we have step up on our Facebook page, so if you ever have any questions. So you'll probably notice probably more traffic stops out there than normal. Other than that, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got a question. Have we progressed anywhere with this pickup parking across the sidewalk?
I've got a picture and I, with the holidays, I was going to get a letter sent and have, or call them and have a conversation to see if we can get them to stop parking across the sidewalk. So, but yes, I actually, I actually was able to witness it last week, so I need to get a picture taken.
Is that everybody or just one person?
It's one, if there's one particular resident that we've noticed is consistently parking across the sidewalk.
That there are others and you're your neighbor one?
There's quite a few.
Yeah.
I mean, you want to be fair, I guess.
Right. If I'm notified of them and we're aware of them or, you know, we see them, then we can address, you know, unfortunately, I can't just send a blanket letter out to, you know, all of them.
What about this tractor that's parked down, whatever street this is, Chris?
We sure you made contact with it today as a donkey.
I don't know if it's gone. I've had two people ask me about it, you know, it's parked in the alley.
Yeah, we're going to take care of it today, I know, so.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I had a firm discussion with ICAP this morning about resolving our first deer that we hit with the 2022 patrol vehicle because we had, what was it, last night? Over the weekend. Over the weekend, minor damage on the black charger. So we had another deer incident over the weekend, but I have been trying to work with ICAP for three months, trying to get them resolved. And I finally told the nice person on the phone this morning that I was tired of waiting. So I think we finally have that resolved and we should be, they should be cutting us a check for that patrol vehicle finally. Been working on the budget or trying to, we got valuations, got access to the new budget system this morning. We did have, with valuations, we did have 15% in taxable growth. With the changes in the legislature with House File 718, they're going to trim us to a revenue growth of only 11%, a little over 11%. So we have a maximum general fund levy that we are going to have to stick with that, you know, actually reduces that number from your levy that rate that you had last year. The dollars will increase a little bit, but the levy rate would actually go down based on what they put us at our maximum growth. And that's just going to evolve over the next several years based on the legislature's drop down of how far they're going to let that growth continue. So we'll, that'll continue over the next several years till we hit a cap. So I've been kind of working through all of that and working on, you know, we talk about vehicle equipment and different things. So I've been trying to delve into the budget as quickly as possible and start getting things around so that we can start talking about it.
Good.
Thank you. Just a good question, if you don't mind. So we hit another deer with another vehicle? Where, where at, you know?
By the school.
So then I'm just asking this question. I've had asked me, they're seeing our Lakeview cop cars out of our district? Is that something we're patrolling out of the area? Is that why this is happening?
If they're going outside the area, it's probably because they're following a car from, that originated from within a town, Lake Wall Lake, Lakeview. If you're seeing them on the way up to Sac City, obviously, we've been going up to jail quite a bit, so I mean, that explains going up there, but.
Just telling you what I've been asked and if I don't have the answer for, like, they're sitting out on Needham Avenue, which is Speeds Road.
Oh, they are?
That's what I've been told.
They're sitting out there?
That's what I've been told, but I don't know that. I didn't see it. I just, somebody asked me, it says, I don't know, that's the Chris and the mayor's job that I'm like.
I'll reiterate where we're supposed to be.
Yeah, I just asked.
Just so we make sure that's clear, but.
Yeah.
As far as I know, I didn't know they were sitting out there. I knew they were out there doing a traffic stop, but.
Just asking the question, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Any more questions? We'll move on to Resolution 2401, is appointing the city officers. On page nine. Move motion approved. We make that motion. Second? Roll call.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
Johnson.
Yes.
2402 is appointing the city attorney, if he still wants to be appointed.
That's why I showed up.
I'll make that motion.
See if they still had a job.
There's seconds left motion.
Second.
Roll call that.
I was slipped out.
Well, they're both second.
You mean both?
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Walton.
Yep.
Johnson.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Okay, 2404 is approving the members of the Lakeview volunteer fire department. You know that motion?
A-huh.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yep.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, 2405 is naming the three banks in town as our repositories.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Beckman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Okay, 2406 is naming the official newspaper for the city of Lakeview. That's why you're here, Dale.
I actually got a letter the other day from Penn, so.
It's a motion approved.
A-huh.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Walton.
Yep.
Johnson.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Yes.
Okay, 2407 is approving the city district administrator to make certain payments. Second? Roll call.
Walton.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Sandkamp.
Okay, Resolution 2408 is ordering construction for certain public improvements. Former plans fixing a date of hearing thereupon and taking bids thereafter. The community center.
Can I ask you guys a couple of questions about the community center, if you don't mind?
We'll answer them as best we can.
Well, so we're looking at the plans here. I know this is going to sound odd company, but now that we're moving forward, I want to make sure we're doing the best thing we can do for the community center. Does that make sense to you?
Would have been helpful. Yeah.
We were never asked.
Well, yes, we were. What's your question? What's your question?
So I see the plans here. I've been sending some stuff to Teresa as well, like, for walk-in cooler. We've got that added as an option, correct?
Yes.
Because we want to make sure we have a walk-in cooler, right?
You're always going to do that.
Well, no, the first set of plans didn't have no walk-in cooler and then Teresa said we were going to go with these stand-up coolers.
I mean, a walk-in cooler is nice, but that's also a luxury item versus the stand-up coolers with the double doors.
Don't deny that in any way, shape, or form. We got to make sure we have enough space for our events to have enough beverages that are cold. You know, I've, you've been to places, I've been to places, Catman's been to places, where you go and you get warm beverages halfway through the night because they don't have enough storage. If we're going to have this great community center, we got to make sure, that's one thing we want to make sure, great that we have, is to satisfy, to satisfy the people that are there.
Okay, so do we have a walk-in cooler? Is that the question?
Well, there is one now in these plans, correct?
Yes, I've actually, I've asked the engineer to put one in as an alternate plan.
Okay. So it's not part of the bid, it's an alternate?
It will, it'd be part of the bid packet as an alternate, but yeah, I mean, so it will be, it'll be in there for us to take a look at.
Depending on the cost. I mean, I just don't want to drive the cost way up because we've not gotten.
Actually, actually, one thing I suggested, Vicki, just so you know, is maybe if the, if it's a cost deal, maybe we take off the garage to start with and put the walk-in cooler on there and add the garage part later, because that'd be a lot less of an add-on later than adding on a walk-in cooler.
Yes, I agree. We already have. I mean, the garage was an option. I mean, that was always our first option, was to remove the garage if our bids are too high.
Okay.
Because, you know, the council has been pretty emphatic about limiting your support financially to an X amount of money. So, you know, we have to stay on budget.
Well, and totally understand that, but again, there's just a couple of things I wanted to make sure I brought up. And then we briefly talked earlier, I mean, so the conference room is this, I'm trying to figure out, how can we make that reception hall bigger without adding cost? I don't want to add the cost, I want to make it bigger. It's, right now, it's 65 foot wide, which is twice the size of this room.
Yeah.
And it's roughly 80-some feet long.
Yeah.
So, you know, one of the things all through along of this is it's going to be the nicest one in the area, okay? Nicest and biggest one in the area so we can accommodate enough people.
Uh-huh.
That's, I don't have the exact measurements of Wall Lake, but I did.
What's the square foot, what's the square footage, Teresa, on the interior?
It's 65 foot wide.
So what's the square footage?
65 and 80, you'd be just shy of 5,000.
Yeah. 5200 square feet if 65 by 80 is, so.
That could be take 100 and you take the 16 minus 16.
65 minus 80?
No, 5200.
5200 square.
What's Walton? I, I don't know.
Well, in a banquet hall, that's approximately 5,000 square feet holds 500 people. So our promise, campaign promise was 380. So the 5,000 square feet would accommodate up to 500 people, so we're meeting the campaign promise.
So that is bigger than the Wall Lakes. I'm trying to compare it to something.
Yeah.
First, you can potentially see.
We're, you know, we're, our intention is not to be out or whatever it's.
No, I get, I'm just trying to compare it to a neighboring one that we know that we've all physically seen.
Yeah.
Because I think a lot of people, some people, you're a great speaker. Some people are thinking, oh, it's going to be like the Lakewood Ballroom and have all kinds of space and it's not, and we like that. I find that because that's way too overkill. But I'm just trying to make sure that's enough adequate space in there.
Well, I, I guess if you want to dig deeper into that, I encourage you to take your own time and run some math, but we've always promised the 380 people per seating capacity and the 5,000 square feet meets that. You know, we've spent a year, two years working on the floor plan and working on the size and it's actually bigger than what we initially started with. You know, I just think it's late in the game or huge change.
Well, so, you know, Vicki, as a council, we have not had any of this information.
But we invited you. When you were first elected.
Was that one meeting I was invited to?
Dale, you know that Brent and I and Vicki, you have known exactly who has been on this committee for the last five years.
So I thought Jim was on the committee as well and I called Jim and he says, he's not on the committee.
No, you, listen, on our campaign materials, it lists who is on that committee and you, you have my number.
If you want me to support and get behind this and give my input, don't be slamming me down.
I'm not slamming you, but this is the, this is the 11th hour, Dale.
I'm trying to make it the best we can do for the city of Lakeview. We have no business plan.
It is the best.
What, have you guys ever presented the council with a business plan last two years?
Yes. Yeah, our business plan hasn't changed. We have a business plan. We submitted that to you.
So who's, who's going to run?
The performer. We have a committee. It will be the person that's hired.
If we, the city, so the city's responsibility then, correct?
The person that is hired, that is going to be a city-owned building, which we've all known.
Right. Well, at one time, we was told by John that somebody wants to lease it for a dollar a year.
I think because Dale, there's just been so many issues and so things come up as a solution to that particular time. I think we're past all that. We've worked hard on this.
And I, I agree, you guys have worked tremendously hard. You've got your heart into it 100%. I'm not taking that away from you.
I know, but, but we have a business plan. We have brochures. We have the performer that you were presented with two years ago. We have all kinds of information. I guess if you haven't had access to that, I, I find that bewildering.
Well, I'll, I'll talk about the performance. One thing, I've had access to that and I've questioned on that and we both agree there's some numbers that aren't accurate in that.
Actually, we went back and redid what you asked for. You asked for two specific things. We went back and researched those, brought them back to the council with new numbers. Yeah. We did, we did adjust the numbers. We got a new insurance code. Yeah. We got the dram shop insurance that you thought was wrong, we went.
Nothing on heating though.
What?
I, well, Mr. Krudoff was sitting here tonight, and I asked him, can you heat a, can you heat a house for nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars a year, and that's what you had in the performer for heating the building.
Then, I, I guess I'm asking you, when you raised the two issues you raised, you know, why did you not, I, we, we.
I did raise that question, though.
We responded to everything you raised.
Dale, what are the questions you have tonight? Try to answer those as best we can, with a, a specific question.
I asked you about the recall, I didn't realize, Wall Lake says a seating capacity of four twenty-five, says right in there, maximum seating capacity of four twenty-five.
I don't think they seat that many.
I paid caterers for most of that.
You know, if you, if you, it depends how that's.
Might be in there like sardines.
Right.
And it depends how the seating is set up.
Correct, and we had the long tables not around.
You know, we crammed seven hundred into that space, probably.
I, I tried to sit here, and I want to make sure, we put this to bid a month ago? When did we vote on this as a council, a month ago?
We changed.
The original vote to go to bid was in November, and then we rescinded, we rescinded that, and so it hasn't.
Correct.
It has not gone to bid yet, yeah.
I actually, after that, voted no that night, that next day I was up talking to John and Teresa because the bar location was up by the stage.
What's your question tonight that I can answer for you?
Okay, so you've asked, answered the recall area, you say it's gonna seat three hundred and eighty people, is that large enough, is that what you guys want? One question, because my question is, is there a way to redesign a little bit of the inside to change that out? We talked about the conference room and the serving room, the serving room could be a separate breakout room, correct?
The what could be separate?
Serving room.
Could be, is a separate room, correct?
For, like a break, so Teresa said earlier, the conference room could be a small room for rented or a breakout session, so the serving room could serve as a double.
Yeah.
That was one of my questions. My second question is, when this is built and it's in operation, are we gonna have a board of directors run this?
Yes, which is also in the materials that we have shared from early on. We are gonna have a board that will run it, um, you know, obviously the city council will be, John or someone would be in advisory position, I mean, you know, we, we, I think we set it up at three, we're thinking more maybe. Um, but it should run kind of like the library, you guys don't micromanage the library, and this, I think, can run the same way, so it's not constantly an issue for you.
Excellent news.
Yeah.
And we'll do an application process for board members, so we're able to select the folks that are best suited to serve on the board, uh, based on their strengths and their base of knowledge and experience. Well, and that, that would also be approved by the council as well.
Right, right, right.
So, I mean, there would be a, there basically would be a resolution and an ordinance set up, like your parks board.
Like we did for the library, library's an excellent example.
Yes.
Yeah, that's exactly, so. The thing though, that I have a problem with is.
Yeah, we don't, they just do it.
Right.
The reason it didn't go to bid, if I recall, if I'm accurate, is because you wanted the bar moved, right?
I thought it was a great suggestion.
So, at that point in time, why did you not raise these other issues, why, why are we now?
I've asked these other questions before.
You wanted that something, I didn't hear it.
And, and I'll say this, to, to, you know, the unfortunate part about this entire project, and I just got started in it with July, is that, you know, we didn't have detail engineering specs. We didn't even have them the last time when we talked about, and that was one of the reasons why appropriately it got delayed to this point, is that this, although the committee did diligence on having University of Iowa do their thing. When this finally got into engineers' hands of putting it together for this project, um, I've had multiple conversations with Bob Beanstra on where trusses are and how this isn't going to work with the way it had been originally designed. So, I mean, this is the best product that we have been able to come up with, you know, trying to meet everybody's expectations.
And I understand that, and we have no problem with it, you know, it was a delay, delays are tough, but that's the way it was. But my question is, is if we were looking at the floor plan then, now we're looking at it again to change, how many times are we gonna keep changing?
Well, I think we're just trying to make sure that, that we're putting forward the best, the best product, you know, since several of us have not been involved, especially me, at, that, you know, in the timeframe that I've been involved in it. I certainly, if my name's gonna go on this project, I want it to be the best project that we can put forward. So, you know, I'm trying to take advisement from the committee and also the council, because it is a city-owned building.
It is.
So, you know, at the end of it, I think we're just all trying to make sure that we're doing the best for the community that we can possibly come up with, and, you know, at this point, I think this is the, you know, one of the best products. Yeah, one of the reasons why, you know, we can't shift walls is because of the way the trusses are laid out, and we have to have the walls, you know, laid, the side walls that are, are established for the bathrooms and the serving room and that side of the building, we have to have those trusses laid out in their place. We actually shifted some of it that, the bathrooms actually got a little bit smaller, and the, the conference room and the, the, the serving room got a little bit larger because of, of the way the trusses have to be laid out in a building sense of the word.
Yeah.
Um. I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, if you were to go back to the materials that we printed in how many years ago, twenty-one, maybe?
That pamphlet thing?
Yeah, the eight and a half by eleven, and if you look at that original building, that layout and what we ended up with, the, all the major components are the same. There's just been some shiftrating of pieces because of the structural integrity of the building, however, all of the, um, main pieces are still there. Yep. What's the date on that, Dale, at the top?
Twenty-twenty.
Okay, so that's when we did a mass printing?
Okay, it says Tuesday, October thirteenth, twenty-twenty.
That was the date of our.
The wall was a good suggestion.
It was, I think it was an excellent, yeah, it really was.
That was. Save us my inheritance.
I think, I think it made it much more cohesive and, yeah. And we understood that engineer is going to see this through a much different perspective than we are, because we're, we're not structural engineers, that is a very specific, um, you know, field and level of, of talent and knowledge that, uh, we're not structural engineers. So I, I do think we have the best product for what we're able to accomplish with the dollars that we have available.
You know, I mean, we do have to keep an eye on the dollars that we have available, we would love, love it to be the Taj Mahal too, but, you know, you gotta live in reality, and the, and the city has a budget, and, you know, I mean, it just all flows into it, but, you know, obviously, we've worked on this a long time, we want it to be.
Yeah. And everybody does.
Yeah.
I do feel that we're very, um, you know, we have stayed within the overall intention, look and feel of the building and what we're looking to accomplish, that really, that has not shifted, um, since the beginning of this project. So, any other questions that are needed to be answered?
That, that answered my specific questions on that, so when this is being constructed, then is Beast or Kim having somebody on staff to make sure they're following this back here?
I have asked for a proposal, um, for them to follow through, um, with the entire project, but yes, that is my intent, that they will, um, follow through and be on site as they would in any normal city. We, we're gonna have to, it just, that's not an option, so.
It's a big project, yeah.
It all comes down to the bid opening date.
Which is right now set for, I think, January twenty-fifth, and I've gotten several phone calls, there's a lot, there's, there's a lot of people, I, we had, we had a phone call today from a construction company that wants to look at it, so.
I'm wondering if the construction guys are now with interest as high as it is.
Is, is that, is that long enough?
I think, I think it's appropriate, I think they have enough time with, with twenty, with, yeah, with January twenty-fifth, I think that should, that should work.
This was Bob Beanstra's suggestion.
Right, when we questioned the timing, it was Bob's suggestions.
Well, first he was gonna do twenty days, and then the contractors called him and said, that's not enough, they want twenty-five days, so that's.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm getting at, the longer you get, the better.
Right.
But if you have any, if any of you have any other additional questions, you know, Brett Muggenberg, myself, Vicki, happy to answer those, there's no question that we're not available to answer.
Have we answered your questions enough, Dale, you wanna have a motion to do that? Resolution twenty-four oh eight?
My question here.
Well, if you have more, feel free to call me.
I will, thank you.
You bet.
A motion on resolution twenty-four oh eight to approve?
So.
Second?
Second.
Rule call.
Jensen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
I oppose the whole project, no.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, you know, we want to talk about the ditch witch and the Vermeer potholer back.
So, uh, you know, a couple of council meeting ago, Dale brought up that starting a list and replacing equipment that we need to. Uh, the potholer is a piece of equipment that we use dang near every day. Uh, the one that we have now, it's from two thousand and eleven, according to our sheets, has some surface rust, it, does it still work? Absolutely it does, not gonna sit here and tell you it doesn't, it does, it still does the job. Um, Vermeer was talking to us one day, he brought us, uh, a loner one that they have, it's a very nice machine, it's got a lot of features that the current one does not have. There are things on there that we will use more consistently, one of the big features that we, and I'll speak for myself, really like is it has hydraulic hookups. Right now, if we have a water main break and we dig the hole and we got the ditch witch there, which we always have, we have to take the skid loader and use the hydraulic hookups on the skid loader in order to pump the water out of the hole. This ditch witch takes it so we don't have, or the Vermeer one takes it so we don't have to take another piece of equipment there in order to do that, we can hook it up directly to the ditch witch, do what we have to do, and keep the water out of the hole at the exact same time. Does that make sense? You look confused, Dale.
Well, I'm trying to, if I, so you're talking the water in the hole from the water main?
Correct.
Not the water in the hole from running the back.
No, it's from the main break or whatever it is, it makes it so we can get down there and work, we gotta throw our hydraulic pumps down there. It makes it so we don't have another piece of equipment blocking up the streets doing what we have to do. It's got a boom on it, um, the boom, I'll be honest with you, it's a luxury item, just for the sheer fact that when you have a main break, you're sitting there and you're taking the three or four-inch hose and you're moving it up and down because it likes to clog. The boom takes that pressure off of a guy standing there doing that, we have the boom, it, could it potentially save us a work comp claim? Absolutely, potentially could, have we had one? Not that I'm aware of, at least not in the timeframe I have been here. Um, so, yeah, it's a luxury item on that, it also has, um, a, a spray bar on the inside to clean the inside, currently, the way we clean it is you open it up, you tilt it back, you take the pressure wand, you go back there, and you get yourself covered in mud. Um, that's just the nature of the beast with the one that we currently have. In your packet, you'll see ditch witch is what we currently have, this is just the newer version, um, if we threw the hot water heater or the hydraulic jack, I believe the hydraulic jack is a necessity for us. Um, currently, we leave it hooked up to the three fifty because that thing's a pain in the rear to jack that thing up by hand, it, it takes a small army to do it. Uh, the hydraulic jack will make it so we can take it on and off the trucks as needed and simpler for us. The, when you look at your packet, you have for the ditch witch itself, and then the next one would be just the equivalent Vermeer to the ditch witch. It's the apples-to-apple on that one. When, uh, Travis was here, he brought the demo model, the demo model has eighteen hours on it that has all the stuff that we have talked about. The one thing I did forget to mention is the Vermeer has what we call a reverse back, so when a rock or something gets plugged in there, you flip a lever, it shoots the air the opposite way, cleans the hole. Currently, the ditch witch does not have that, you have to take it off, you gotta beat it on something to get it unclogged, or sometimes you have to take certain portions, like the coupler at the end of the hose off, because you gotta go at hitting the rock out the opposite way, it's not a fun thing. The demo model, he gave us the price on it, and then the last quote that's in there is identical to the demo model, but not the, if we didn't buy the demo model and we bought the exact same thing, does that make sense?
Yeah, if you were to buy it, brandy.
So, that's the difference between them, um, talked to Travis, if we did decide to go forward with this, he will let us make payments until the next fiscal budget, and those payments go towards the purchase price. Um, if we wanted to pay for it all outright with cash, I don't know where Teresa's gonna find it, but that, that's on her to find that, um, so there are different options. I do think this is the first piece of equipment that we need to change out, as it is something very valuable to what we have to do with all the underground fiber and electrical lines and everything else that we have.
So, I gotta, you use, I know what the back is used for.
Correct.
But are we doing this for like contractors that are coming to town?
No.
We're doing all this?
We do it for when we need it, when we're fixing water main leaks, or when we're doing a boring project, or somebody's having something bored, we'll go out and we will find our electrical line so they don't hit it. We will do stuff like that to protect our equipment, I don't know if we charge for it or not.
It's like we're protecting ourselves.
So we're not having to go back and fix it.
So is that something that has changed?
Not in the six months that I've been here.
So I'm going back three years ago or four years ago when I built my place, it was my responsibility to locate all that stuff, I had to hire a contractor to come in.
Private lines, yes.
It was the city's public lines, it was the city's electrical?
We locate to the meter.
Locate, you guys locate?
Right, yeah.
Then I had, Patchhour actually had to bring his vac in, I had to pay for him to come in with his vac to go around the electrical lines that were going down there for us to get to the sewer. I had to pay Patchhour for that.
Okay.
The city didn't do that for me, same way when natural gas ran up to my place, and then Patchhour had to run my water line in, I had to pay Patchhour to do that.
I, I can honestly tell you in the timeframe I have been here, the only contractor we have done it for was when we did the Lake Shore Drive project.
Well.
And that was our sole and city project.
Well, which is fine, but you're doing this for other, you just said you were doing it for protecting our equipment, Patchhour had to do it to protect the city's equipment that day, the city's lines.
So, I, I can't comment about what happened prior, in the timeframe I have been here is all I can speak of, we did it for the Lake Shore project, which was protecting our stuff, we didn't do the fiber, we did our electrical line, and then when we replaced the fire hydrant out on Provost, yes, we had the contractor replace the fire hydrant, and we did a lot of the digging. We potholed to find our electrical lines because it's so, uh, compact right there, we didn't want him to take his backhoe and hit our, uh, electrical line, which is great.
Those, those both are city projects, so for private entity, we probably wouldn't do that.
If Bob calls, we haven't done that in the timeframe I have been here, I can't tell you what's happened previously.
So, my question is, we, we put on seventy hours a year average on this machine, it's a hundred and some thousand dollars.
So they use it like to put in signposts? Um, say you're putting in a new stop sign or something, they, they'll use it to?
That, that's my question.
Yep.
I mean, so if, Whitey's building a new house, pick on you, Whitey, build a new house, and we want, the electric, main electric lines are going past there, are we going out and locating them for that contractor that has to get the water sewer in there?
We have not been.
Okay.
Not, I, all I can tell you is what I've seen since I've been here.
That shouldn't be our responsibility, that would be the contractor that's building that new house, yes.
That's where, so then nothing is changed.
And we go locate with our locator, but we're not potholing.
Correct, okay.
Right, I, I mean, we've done it for our own city-owned project so that we aren't having to pay extra for, you know, our own, you know.
Because some of the city project, I mean, street signs, I don't know how many street signs were replaced, and, I mean, I hear you talk about locates, 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 and I don't, I know we do locates for, like, we did locates for the new establishment going on Main Street, I see that all marked up, but, you know, we didn't, you need the backup there.
We didn't need it for that stuff, no, but like, we've been using it to, uh, do curb stops, and a lot of the times we use the potholer so we don't have to call and locate. If you use the potholer, you don't have to call and locate, because you're gonna be able to see everything, and then, depending on what it is, like, we did the curb stop out of Dixieland, we could've called in and locate, it was just as easy to use the potholer to do it.
Well, and some of those instances, it's an emergency locate anyway, because you're wanting to get at it right away. Well, they, they had a leak. Right. We needed to shut the water off, couldn't do it, had to change out our curb stop, in order to do it quickly, they potholed instead.
I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands what we use this vac for and what situations.
Hey, it seems like we're using it, well, we use it for water main breaks, obviously, we use it for street signs, whatever signs we're putting in, whatever it should happen to be, the electric guys will use it out on some of their stuff to find their equipment. So they can, instead of taking the mini-X out all the time, they can pothole, and then where they have to splice in, they can splice in, or if we do have a break in a line, they can pothole just that area and not disturb as much. We use the potholer out on the manholes, I believe it's called the Hanky project, trying not to disturb everything with the mini-X. We figured out that the mini-X was gonna be a quicker job, so we did two of them, and then we did the rest with the mini-X.
I think one of the, I mean, one of the biggest reasons why this is even in front of you guys tonight is that the demo model, they, they held off on the opportunity for us to have it if we want it until this week. until this week. And this is why it's kind of in front of you because if, if we aren't interested in the demo model, then they're gonna try and sell it to somebody else and we'll just, you know.
Correct.
Has anybody tried any negotiation price wise?
I talked to Travis on the Vermeer. He said that is the state pricing that they give everybody, that's state. That's the bottom line that he will do. Ditch which, when I called them to get the quote, he said that's the state pricing. I'm, and this is probably bad, and when I say this, I'm assuming when they say state pricing, that's the lowest price they're gonna give us. I mean, I can ask them to lower it, but
Yeah.
Uh, I would anticipate the answer to be kick rocks.
Look, they'll let us kind of pay this out?
Correct.
So what, so what other equipment are we looking at updating? If you've done any, because we're gonna start working on the budget and even though we can pay this out, it's gotta be, it's gotta be paid for eventually.
Absolutely.
I know we've got uh, I know we've got uh the Northwest Water Pressure issue that we've gotta get in our budget somehow. We've got the drainage issue that we gotta get in our budget somehow. I think we need a new well.
That would be correct.
You know, so we've got, I'd like to be able to see what, everything that we're going to need so we can prioritize what we need because we have a working piece of equipment today.
Not just being that.
I, I, I get where you're coming from. I'm just asking, do you know what other pieces of equipment? I don't wanna come back next month and say, well, we bought the new, this used Vermeer because we thought it was the time to buy it. But now we need a skid loader and then we need, I'm just drawing.
When I look at what was previously done, like the skid loader, according to the sheets that was previously done with Scott and everybody else, like that one they're looking at twenty twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um, the bucket truck, which is on there, setting money aside to start to plan for the new bucket truck. And we had a discussion with Trent today on what we're looking at for a bucket truck and how to go forward with that. The backhoe, I believe, is in good shape.
Also.
The, the skid loader and the Mini X and the man lift were all purchased at the exact same time, two thousand sixteen, is what the sheet says, is what I'm going off of. Um, the Mini X, I think we can push that off a couple more years. The skid loader, I think probably would be the next piece of equipment that we would look at as much as we use that. Um, the man lift, we're spending money right now to get it fixed uh because it had some hydraulic hoses and leaking. I think we can definitely push that a lot farther than uh having to replace that when we replace everything else. Um, on there, we have the trencher that was supposed to be in the next fiscal budget to replace the trencher. I do not believe that needs to be um after the amount of money that we just spent for it to get it fixed and in working order.
Yeah, we got a couple of vehicles that we're looking at. I mean, and some of this stuff is different buckets of money as well. Or if it's shared equipment, it's shared out of a couple of different buckets of money.
Correct.
Um, you know. I, I, yeah, it's a demo model. It, it's what would be nice to have. You know, um, again, the reason why we have it in front of you is because, you know, Vermeer was looking to sell it off to somebody else. Um, you know, if, if our equipment can last, I mean, there's other certain, other places we can put a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars too. Um, you know, we don't have a payloader. A payloader sure would be nice. Um, just because of the different things that a payloader can do versus a backhoe.
Correct.
Um, you know, and that kind of stuff. So I mean, there's a lot of different things that we need to think about and where, where those monies are gonna come from.
Will they take the main channel retreat?
No, but I bet you we could get a decent price for it selling it elsewhere. Uh, and, and if you notice, if you look at his quotes, he quoted us as giving us twenty-seven five for trade-in. I think that's low. Um, I think if we put it out for different bids or sealed bids, I think we'll get more money than twenty-seven five. And I say that as we've had a contractor already tell us he'd pay us more than that if we wanted to sell it. It's not a hundred and eighteen thousand, I can guarantee that. Um, but it's probably anywhere from three thousand to ten thousand more is where his price range is what he quoted. That he'd be willing to buy that, but we obviously have to follow the correct procedures and let everybody have a chance.
How long, uh, like if we've bought a non-demo model, are they readily available today?
Yes. They are.
And this new one that you're looking at, it's an eight hundred gallon. Is that what the size are current ones?
We have a four hundred.
Four, so it's twice the size of water capacity for you, so you can basically back twice the size of a hole.
Correct.
Or not have to go to the pit.
Well, we're not gonna have to go fill up a water often.
With this demo, is there any kind of warranty with it?
It's the exact same warranty as a brand new one. I believe he said it's a one-year all parts. Uh, and then there's certain parts of it go down in warranty, obviously, just like a new vehicle and stuff like that. Um, that's the one reason I like the Vermeer. Is Travis, he's traveling through all the time. He's been very easy to work with, especially with the trencher and everything else. The sales, the service after the sale, um, is why I like the Vermeer. And their service stations is either Marcus or I wanna say it's Anthony or Urbendale. Uh, the Des Moines area.
That's where, the metro is where the trencher went.
So, um, by all means, I'm not saying that we have to have the demo model. I think there's some benefits.
What, what year is the demo model?
It's a twenty-three.
How many hours?
Eight.
But the better deal would be to buy the demo and then Big Iron, the one we got.
I don't even know if you wanna go Big Iron.
I probably won't. Chrissy will be up still.
Somebody else.
Correct.
Yes, because they're not gonna give us what they should for that trade-in.
Right.
They're gonna sell it for a profit for goodness sake.
Correct.
I hope they would.
I mean, the nice thing about going with a sealed bid, you don't like them, you reject them and we can always go down the Big Iron route if we wanted to, I guess. I don't think we have to go down that route.
There's plenty of venues to sell it. Big Iron's what we've used in the past. I'd say we gotta go there. What would the council like to do? What's our money situation?
Well, I haven't, I haven't seen this month. I mean, we, we got a bunch of, you know, the one thing we have to remember is we've got a F four fifty on order that should be coming in in March.
Correct.
So, you know, it, it just kind of depends on how, what kind of payment plan that they would like to put together until we either got, you know, got to the new budget year or, you know, we would have to, you know, we can always do a budget, budget, we gotta do one anyway. Um, but it's not, you know, if I think if we took it, I mean, obviously water, it can't necessarily come out of water, but it can, you know, there's a couple of different buckets that you could probably take this out between sewer and, you know, electrical or, you know, different things that we could find it. We just gotta figure out, you know, one of the things, you know, I guess at, at the end of the day, one of the things that you guys are gonna be looking at tonight because there's some projects on here that I, Jason and I don't even know anything about and what those plans are. Um, you know, and that kind of stuff, so.
Can we move this on the agenda? Do we talk about more of the budget stuff?
We can. Do you wanna put it off until after we talk about more of the budget stuff? We can certainly do that and see where we.
Would that make sense for you guys? Yep.
We can certainly do that.
And if they sell it, they sell it, so.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, if you guys don't, if you guys decide, you know, that we don't want this, you know, we'll tell them either they hold it or they look for another buyer. That's, you know, they would hold, they will hold this till the end of the week in a sense. Just exclusively for us. Um, I mean, we can take a look at what we have rest in the capital improvement plan and go through that tonight. If you guys at the end of the meeting decide that we wanna backtrack and go this route, we can certainly do that. Um, or, you know, else we can see if they can, you know, push it off or, you know, they find another buyer. Who knows? They may not have anybody on the hook. I have no idea.
So do we need a motion to table this or?
No, we don't.
It's just discussion.
Then we'll come back to. Let's review and discuss the budget. I definitely got a lot of things to talk about on there, so we really do a rapid push at a hundred thousand dollars.
Can I ask a question about the budget?
Yes.
So the, the tip money that was allocated for the community center was, the way I understood it, was taken to use the water line project with the assurance that it would be given back. Now with the new state guidelines, how is that covered?
So basically, there was a resolution done back in April when the, the wa, that one seventy-five water line was done for reimbursement. Um, so we can go at any time and we can do a reimbursement on basically take debt on for that project and reimburse the, the tip fund that we.
You can, you can still do that. I just knew the state made some changes and I wasn't sure when we were effective. Thank you.
Yep.
I wanna walk you through this.
Um, sure. So basically, the one that you have in, that's got some markings on it that we provided a new copy for you here. Um, Jason and I went through it and we crossed out everything that we were aware of that were, was, that has been completed. Stuff that hasn't, you know, been fully completed, um, or that we just weren't exactly, I guess, sure about. Um, so we, you know, certainly go through through them kind of, you know, um, the technology upgrade, which isn't marked off, I think we kind of have that completed. Um, at least for this year, I mean, that's in various shapes that we, you know, purchased with um, some different things when I came out of work. Um, the city council chairs, those have been purchased. For, for your financial audit, we're in the process of getting that, that completed. Um, they were here prior to Thanksgiving and I haven't gotten any report on that yet. Um, you know, set aside business improvement grant, twenty-five thousand, my knowledge, we have not, you know, dispersed any of those dollars out of that fund. Um, the sidewalk program, which I've been, you know, I've talked to Dale and Mike on, that's got fifteen thousand. You know, that we can certainly, you know, look at expending out in the spring here, you know, after winter.
Thanks for the job.
That's right.
Same here. Come again.
The community center green infrastructure, most of that is completed except for the bioretention cells that will be done after the building is erected. We can't do any of that, um, until that's done. Um, the LVHDA signage plan, I don't even know what that is.
Those were those signs that?
I have a meeting with, I believe her name's Jackie.
Yep, Jackie Wallace.
January fourth, because we have the signs, just nobody knew where they're supposed to go. So she's gonna take me around on Thursday and show me where uh they were supposed to go and then we will get those installed.
So I think that's completed, basically, other than installation. Um, replace community entrance signs. I think that's pretty much done or no?
Never did.
Never did it? Okay. Um, so on the electrical side, I mean, the purchase for F four fifty, that's, I mean, that's been ordered. We don't have it. It should be here in March. Is I believe the delivery date on that. Um, set aside, um, staff, um, underground replacement from sub, substation or switch. Those two projects, I know DGR is working on those. Um, we've talked to them a couple of different times. They're, I think, now waiting on some information from us. Um, Jason and I have, and Trent have to work through that. Um, liquid partners, electric and streetlights. My understanding that this project's either kind of on hold, it's, you know, it's there, there's no progress with this project.
They're, they're doing some work out there.
They have been.
Get the fence line out, see all the mulberry trees it looks like. Is that what they're doing? I mean, I don't know. I haven't talked to them, but that's what it looks like they've done.
Who's doing that? Phillips?
I'm assuming Phillips is paying for that. I've just seen the N Y's planter markers in the tree line.
I just know that, that this particular part of the project, no, no one's come to me on any of that.
It's on hold.
Um, I mean, the fire department, um, that's, the equipment bus has been ordered. Um, delivery date, I think is
Late June.
Late June, yes.
July fourth is the scheduled build week.
Um, and then in the parks department, I mean, you guys just did the aquatic herbicide, but for my understanding, I think, you know, for this fiscal year, that's completed. Um, it's an ongoing project, so that'll get put back in. Um, Jason and I really don't have a whole lot of information or understanding on what is being expected out of the Camp Crescent Drainage Project.
I will, so, uh, we don't know how to fix the drainage problem right now, or we don't have a plan at least, but my direction's straight here, the northeast part of the campground, we just put the last ten cement pads flush.
Okay.
Hey, and Teresa skipped over it. Uh, the feature at the splash pad has been added. It is up. And then the repair of the Speaker Park Fountain, it is working. I don't know what else is the intent of it, if they want lights or what.
Rehabilitation, I think, is kind of what has been talked about, but what that entails, I think we need to meet with them.
I can tell you we can make it work and we can make water shoot.
All that good stuff.
Yep.
Um.
That, that Camp Crescent Drainage Project, is that really a this year issue? Because
As soon as it rains, that is an issue. If it don't rain.
I mean, to get it done.
Oh, I, we don't, we did a, we did a study with DGR, I believe it was. And we have that study that lands up the whole elevation of the campground. The whole campground zone. They actually went down into the lake to get the water level when the lake's low like it is today. And that's what they're using on, which is inaccurate statement and they never have updated it back to us from them. But we have to have a plan, you know, if we try and renovate the campground somehow to update it, what are we gonna do with this water as well? So then we're talking about this water in this northeast corner and taking it down by, that's just for lack of a better word, done by the storage or, or the car wash. Well, now that, well, that water's sitting there, so we gotta get rid of that water there too. So we gotta work, maybe work backwards. That's the, I think we had some plans in that field. I think it was five hundred thousand dollars putting rains in that field. Down one of the new lockers.
Yep, yep.
So we got, because that's all gonna flood. I mean, even a two-inch rain now, the last two-inch rain we had, the rain went over the road. Since they filled in that whole marsh here. So we gotta figure out how to start there first before we go to the campground and fix that issue. But it's all tied into one big project. I mean, it's.
We had a group meeting down there by car wash. There must have been one dozen of us that day, business owners, landlords. And we never did get much resolved, other than we need to start working on it.
Same, same way with Outlet Twenty, which is the old salvage ground property. That drainage, there was a plan to bring that drainage water down there too, but you can't just keep taking all the water down to the area that's already flooded. So we gotta get rid of it somehow there. And what is our plan to do that? It's, it's, you know, it's not gonna be a three hundred thousand dollar plan. I think that three hundred thousand was an estimate that we had to get new tiles and everything converted out of the campground across the two roads down to the north, down to the ditch which parties. And we were talking with Scott back then about working with the state, what's the state's plan on that road, you know? There's only two or three tiles that go from one side of the road to the other. You know, so we gotta get permission from the state because it's a state road. How are we gonna do that? Are we gonna raise that road and redo it? We just, it's just something that needs to really be addressed. Because hopefully this spring we'll get lots of water.
Right, it becomes a problem.
Yeah, and then, so Larry Hauser owns that field, you know, and he was involved in that meeting. And, you know, he is concerned about the water issue. He said, you know, the city keeps pouring more and more water down to his area. And again, you know, now a locker's gonna add to that. It'd be nice if we had a waterway to go, because it's a drainage toward the north, to that Indian Creek. But we gotta, we gotta figure, that's where we're gonna start backwards on that, to, to bring you up to speed a little bit on that.
So this would almost be like the bottom end of the, of the project, not necessarily the top end of the project.
Starting with the outlet part instead of the inlet part.
Yep.
And pre-cork backwards.
Um, then the dock at Town Bay Boat Ramp, that's complete, my understanding is.
Yep.
Replace lights in the exhaust at Bathhouse one and two, we don't know if that's been done.
That's my knowledge.
I don't think so. So the next two items, replace the two thousand nineteen Tora mower and the Kubota mower. That has been completed, I would like to get us on a rotate, you know, I don't know what the policy's been in the past, but I'd like to get us on a rotation, you know, going forward, that we continue to do something with that equipment there. Six tables for Centennial House, I don't know what was, I don't.
They're replacing the heavy brown ones with the white ones, but as far as I know, they didn't buy any.
Not done yet?
Hasn't that all been done?
No, one side has and one side doesn't.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the TV for the south side of the shelter house, to my knowledge, that's not been done. Washer dryer for camp staff, um, I believe that there's, that's taken care of.
There's, no, that's, we didn't do that.
Yeah, I donated a washer and dryer and they put it in there and then installed it.
Oh, they did?
We didn't buy one, I gave them one.
Did she want to add on to put that in there?
What do you mean add on?
I thought she wanted to add on to that office building to add the washer and dryer.
No, they put it where the old one used to be. Yeah.
Got another one you want to donate?
Uh, no.
The police, I mean, purchase an outfit patrol vehicle, I mean, we've gotten two, two vehicles, so I think right now that that's kind of, you know, completed. I haven't had a chance, because with the holidays and stuff, I don't know where we're at with the next.
We got the body cameras and in-car cameras, we got the computers, we got the radar, we got everything but the shields and helmets. We posted shields and helmets, so.
Oh, okay.
Ballistic shield helmets, they're coming up.
Yep.
You have the spike strips?
Yep.
Then for sanitary sewer, um, some of these sewer repairs, Hanky, Outlet Twenty and Provost. We've got some of these completed, some of them we couldn't complete versus because we got manholes sitting over, you know, ass, under asphalt and different things. But manhole repair, some of these, we didn't know if there was specific, I mean, we've done some of these things, we didn't know if there was specific that had been in mind prior to Jason and I, so some of this, we're kind of, you know, shooting in the dark on what.
Some of them, Dean said while he was here that he was gonna do it within house, but things never got done, but there's several of them down Madison Street, down Third Street here, you know, that are tassy that need addressed.
Well, and I took that one as manhole repair, the one on Lake Street, and that's why I crossed that off. And there's some other ones that are down, yes.
Right.
Coming off the highway up there on on Madison Street, there's one there that's two inches down and you just that short half a block, there's another, another one that's lower.
In the main street on that sidewalk too, north in the main street.
Well, yeah.
That's a storm sewer.
Right.
Right?
But it's actually on that, north in the main street, it ain't the storm sewer that's bad, it's the sidewalk behind the storm sewer in the building.
Okay. We had a, we had a list that we.
I've got that at home too.
We were trying to get bids on it, we never got bids, remember that?
Yeah, I mean, so I don't, you know, any, any information that if you guys happen to have stuff that had been discussed at council that we may not be privy to, I haven't come across some of those things yet in my office, and I don't think Jason's come across them in his, so, you know, yeah, if you've got something that would aid us in trying to figure some of this stuff out, that would be great. Lift station upgrade number seven and number thirteen, to our knowledge, this has not been completed. Um, I think, you know, and some of this stuff Jason and I have talked about, so we're trying to get, you know, either updated quotes or talk about what it would take, you know, to get these accomplished. Either if not yet in this budget year, or if not, you know, then push them into where we need them.
So lift station upgrade seven thirteen, I don't remember what that upgrade was.
It's the electrical panels.
It's just electrical panels?
Yes.
Then that's gonna be twenty grand a piece?
The last two that were done by Quality Pump were fourteen nine five, I believe.
Okay.
So.
Was this, and this hooks up that remote readout thing then?
No, this is just replace, from my understanding, no, this is replacing the interior guts of the electric panels to make sure that the pumps and everything and the breakers and everything is changed out and brand new and working. So the remote readout, I believe that's the Omni site stuff. Uh, which is another question later on down the line, because I don't know where we're sitting at on that, because currently we have two lift station, well, two things that will call us, the water plant when there's an issue, and then we have the main lift station out at the wastewater plant. The rest of the lift stations do not call us. There's a light that goes off, but it doesn't call you and say I call it the Pepsi, uh, the Pepsi lift station is going off, we don't have that.
So we, if I remember this correctly, we set money aside to upgrade them to call, so we didn't have to have the staff with two people drive around the lake and check all of them every day. Is that still, does that, am I right with that statement?
We have, we approved these Omni
Beacon.
Beacon or whatever you wanna call it.
And again, that goes back to a lot of staff and the management changing positions.
Right.
So we have to get back on some of that stuff, however we see fit. Now, you might have a different opinion of how you want that to go. You know, so we're gonna need some input from you and Teresa as well, is that?
Well, right, I mean, because we get to not included in capital improvement plan is we get to Omni Beacon alarm, and it says it's ordered, but Jason and I really, actually, we know nothing about that, so.
Well, and if it's just the Omni Beacon alarm, that should be the audible alarm that says, hey, the lift station's high.
Right.
That, that doesn't do anything to the electrical panel guts or anything like that. That is just an audible probably and a light alarm that if anybody else is driving by, hey, there's a problem here, we need to call somebody. It's not a telephone communication like we have with the main lift station out at the wastewater plant, when it gets too high, it calls us on our own call phone and says, there's an issue. That is with any of the lift stations that we have, we don't have that on any of them.
Right, but I think we were talking about, talking about adding that.
Absolutely, I think it's a great thing, and I think if that's what the intent of that was, I think we need to move forward with that, but it was not currently done.
So it wasn't ordered, and so lift station seven and thirteen, which is on this.
Yes.
Do you feel that that needs to be done yet? I mean, now that you've been here six months, I mean, I don't know if that's long enough for you to check yet.
I do believe we need to replace those. In my experience, you have hydrogen sulfide that does come up the conduit and into the electrical panels, I think we're gonna have major issues if we don't do this on a routine basis, and when I say a routine basis, that's typically anywhere from what I've seen in my experiences, ten to twenty years.
Do, so when you mentioned that stuff coming up, and we can talk about this another time, but do they put seal offs in there so that reduces that to come up or?
They have been now, the older styles, no.
Okay, perfect. I, I, I guess I really think, you know, these two people, we need to go over a bunch of this stuff before we, so we know where we're at.
That's all mutual.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why, that's why we're sitting here. The, the, you know, we've got the sweet, sweet, street sweeper purchased. North half of Lake Shore Drive has been completed. Annual payment for twenty-two, twenty-two patching, um, we've come to find out that we did not get a payment made. And we still owe this month, um, I talked to, um, we did talk to Nick. And he's agreed to kind of let us slack on this a little bit till we can get kind of caught up um on it. And. I think this is.
This is a different one.
Yes.
Yeah.
So this would have been done.
We should have made a payment last year.
Yeah, that would have been fiscal year twenty-three and we didn't.
Right.
Which road is it for?
I think, I think we have an annual payment, do they do street patching?
No, this is for a specific project.
For a speci, okay.
But I don't think it was the High Street one. I don't think it was that one there, because this was already previously last year and the High Street just happened.
And we paid, we paid for part of this one, because we did it in payments, so this one was done maybe a couple of years ago.
I'll have to look and see what.
Back in twenty, because this is, it was twenty-two, so it would have been done.
Yeah, we should have made a payment last year and that didn't happen.
Yes.
So we made a payment this year, but they wanted a second payment this year, it's like, um.
Yep.
What's that, what, what road is this?
We'd have to pull out that invoice.
I've got it.
We've got it, yeah. M sixty-eight bridge engineering, so, um, we've kind of been working through this with, um, yeah, the engineering company, um, coming up and, um, this would be not done until probably bid let maybe about this time next year. So we're probably talking middle of twenty-five for that bridge replacement.
I thought they was gonna do that this year.
We just got the plans and specs on it from, I wanna say Colburn Burns, but I know that's, is that correct? We just got the bid plans.
We just, we just talked to them about this.
The specs from the engineer.
And we had to go through all of the permitting, which goes through the DOT, the DNR, the feds and everything, they said we probably wouldn't bid let this for another year. So that's why I'm saying early, maybe, you know, mid to twenty twenty-five before we actually start construction on that project. But we also need to plan, you know, for engineering fees. And I don't know, I gotta look up and see what that contract is, because we do have a contract with them. We had discussion with Nick on exchange, you know, with funds on this project. And he also talked about being the administrator for the project so that we weren't having to expend this to the engineer, that Nick would actually, because they do it all the time, would help us out in that direction if we kind of, you know, covered more of the engineering side of it and they covered the administration part of it, so we're kind of working, working that out with that as well. Crack sealing, I don't really know, do you know what that is?
I, I would assume it's the roads, but I don't know what roads they were talking about or what they had planned.
We had.
Or any specific plan in mind, yeah.
We had a guy, what, I don't remember what company it was named from.
Tracy?
Tracy from, that, that name sounds right.
Yeah, from.
Whoever did our, who, like the street pass Vicki's house, whoever did that asphalt, that company. And so like where you put some of the cold patch and fans on, we wanted, the plan is to crack seal some of them, we were getting quotes from this guy who was always gonna come back and tell us what roads should have it done, when don't waste the money on the other ones, because we're trying to do preventative maintenance on the streets. And that's what that was set aside in there for.
Okay, and I can.
My specific streets are nothing designated, it was, we're still waiting for that guy to come back and that's, again, change of staff.
Now that I know that, I can, I can start to hound him.
Yeah, and I'm sure.
I can find it.
Yeah. Do you guys remember that, is that right? Am I right with that? Because, you know, Dean didn't want to do the crack sealing himself, he wanted to sub it out.
I, now that I have that understanding of it, I can find out who it was with Kay and I can start to hound him and we can progress forward uh now that I have some information.
So that's what that was for, for, I guess, lack of better words, preventive maintenance to.
That's a good idea.
To maintain our streets.
I, I think there's certain spots that I would love to see it happen on. But that also would go to, when you look at the different fiscal budgets, like you look at the, the next one of what they projected, uh, there's one where it's re-asphalting. I, I know what road I would prefer to have done first.
Is it in front of my house?
No, but it's close.
I think I know which one you're talking about, Third Street.
I, Third Street by Crescent Park and up around there, I think that, being one of our busiest roads, I think that would be one of our main ones to start with.
I believe that's one that Scott talked about as well. And again, that same gentleman, I mean, that same gentleman was going to also, what do we call it, see, uh, where they lay the little rock chips over the top of a bunch of oil.
Yep.
Instead of tearing up the asphalt they're doing it. But we definitely.
Oh, do an overlay?
Yeah. Instead of doing overlay.
Just doing the rock, the tar and the rock, and eventually you push the rock down into all the cracks and it, it doesn't look like rock anymore, the first six, seven months, it's like a rock road.
It'll be dry for a while.
But he, but I believe on Third Street, this Tracy guy didn't recommend, he recommended that be ground up and re-asphalting.
I, I would tend to agree with that, just based off of the traffic.
Yeah. So I think that, I think what we talked about in our planning session, we talked about, we need to make sure we have a program place to keep up different streets. Lake Shore Drive, is that the one we did?
Yeah.
That was our highest priority because we wanted to finish that second half of that one.
But now that I know, I'll work on getting ahold of Tracy or whoever it is.
Yeah.
And figure out where we're sitting.
We don't care who it is, as long as, that guy was the least expensive for the one street that he did.
Um, so then going on to the water, um, water plant maintenance, we're thinking it was the service pumps and the work that we have done on the water plant this year. But we weren't aware of anything specific, so.
And you forgot the intake manhole repair.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I don't know if that was the storm up here, um, and then the one down on West Street, or if there was specific ones other than that, I I just know those were the two ones that we did this last fiscal year, so.
Like I stated earlier, they're, they're just manholes, you know, around that need attention, and if we address it before they get too bad, you know, like Lake Street.
We won't have the Lake Street again.
So then, um, remove deposits from the Clearwell.
I do not believe that it's been done.
And we've talked, I mean, we talked about getting ahold of a company to, to look at that and get us a quote. Lakewood Partners Water System, we're assuming that this is kind of either on hold or kind of, not that we can't particularly budget for it, I suppose, but I, I would really like to have something more concrete than an, I guess, an idea maybe, I don't know, um, I don't know a lot about this whole project, um, other than, you know, it's kind of just on hold, so. Replace meters as needed, we certainly have exceeded the twenty-five hundred dollar budgeted item, um, and looked to probably spend a little bit more, so we're gonna look at that and see what that number needs to be. Rebuild, replace fire hydrants, we know that we did the one out of Provost, but other than that, I'm not sure that we know of any particular ones that.
They replaced two other non-working ones prior to that.
Okay.
So there was three that we had in town that were not operating at all, them three now, since the Provost one's done, have been, been replaced.
And there's a couple other ones that need replaced, like.
Low pressure.
Down West Street, you know, by the old room property, that one was.
Yeah, so that.
Very low pressure.
We have a sheet somewhere, I have one at home, Kay might have a copy, Bill went around, that's probably four years old, maybe five years old, and did a water flow on all the hydrants. And then he found these three that weren't working, so then we're the three priorities, we have several that, when I say several, it's probably less than a half a dozen that are below two hundred fifty gallons per minute.
Okay.
And then they go all the way up to a thousand gallons per minute. The ones that he identified, but that's why we ordered that flow meter. We used it once, it got plugged, or broke or whatever, and I don't think it's been used.
Had replaced.
Yeah, I don't think it's been used since then.
Hey, I know exactly where it's at and
Yeah.
That is one of our goals this spring, is to get out there and use the flow meter when we're flushing, so we can identify.
Yeah, and then, you know, you talked about the markers on them.
Yep.
I think that's a great idea. As long as we understand what color means.
Well, it will, depending on which markers we've purchased, some of the markers that you can purchase will say two hundred and fifty to five hundred. Some will say five hundred to a thousand, or you can just go with a standard color one, depending on whatever we get to at that point.
I brought that up to the chief, he thought it was a good idea.
Um, and then water valve replacement program, I'm, we're thinking this is four per year, that's the intent, is that we would I mean, and I know that we have water valves that obviously need fixed and replaced, I just, this looks like it's a replacement program and they're looking at about four per year is what we, I don't. they're looking at about four per year is what we, I don't.
I guess that's how I, I take that.
Okay. But we don't think that that has been done, but I don't, you know.
Well, did, did we find a couple that aren't working?
We have a lot that are not working.
Didn't we, did we replace a couple of them?
No.
Didn't, we just know that they're not working and need replaced.
Correct. Uh, when we had the valve exerciser, he, he made a list for us, but we have not progressed any further on that. Um, and I don't know if, like, on that, if it was doing the inserted valve that we had to do on the water plant, we did add a valve on the Provost. And then we did have to fix that two-inch valve up there on the corner of Lake and Lakes, um, Lake Shore. When we were in the middle of the project, so we had done three, but I don't think those were ever part of the intentions of that.
Okay, so moving on to not included for this year, but some of them have been done and some of them look like they might be, we're looking at, you know, in the spring. Um, the Hanky electric, uh, overhead line south of Provost, that's actually was done by Legacy this fall. And then the Hanky electric and streetlights, I'm assuming that that's just kind of a project that's, that's kind of sitting out there, but no progress has been done on it or planned.
That and Lakewood Partners, we have two different developers that were trying to do that, who budgeted that money for them, but both of them developments never came through.
Okay. Um, the, the two generators, they are, I mean, they're sitting out there, we're just waiting on the grant dollars, you know, I can revisit those to see what, you know, I mean, those are, that's pretty many dollars on generators, so I can see where we're at, but I, I know I re, you know, talked to Reason Twelve, they're kind of watching over that, those funds, and as soon as it becomes available, that would be something that we can do. Um, the mini golf project, I'm not sure what this is.
It's a bridge.
Bridge carpet.
Bridge.
Carpet was very.
We did the carpet.
Yeah, there's a bridge, it's not, that we moved out of there, it has the retaining wall, it was falling in.
The, the water was down, the walls were probably.
So we done all this then?
No, I don't, no, the walls.
No, the carpet is done.
Carpet's done.
But, uh.
The cost of the bridge was.
The bridge isn't, that's, bridges are done, and then there's that retaining wall, that hasn't been done either, that's, that's, that's.
Okay.
And they talked about lighting project, different lights on it.
They did lights.
Did the lights.
Yeah, but was it the bridge and the retaining wall that we didn't get bids for either, nobody did that?
Right.
Yep, that was in the package.
That was an email thing where.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to revisit that and see what we can do with that, okay? Um, the roof on the maintenance shop, we believe has been completed, according to what Trent told us, okay? Um, concrete pairs at reflections, and then the handicap parking, Jason and I talked about, you know, this spring trying to get both of those done, I don't think the handicap parking down at the PO should be a big issue to try and overcome, um, and I think that would be a good thing to get accomplished. Replace media in nitrate filter, that's been completed.
Yes.
And then, um, the leak detection program due in the spring. Pretty much the Evaco water line in the northwest loop are completed, other than we have, you know, supplemental contracts for final things that need to be done and, and finished up in the spring, but most, for the most part, those are two projects that are basically done. The northwest pressure system, I mean, that's easier said than done fix, is my understanding, so, I mean, we're, we're looking at that, um, the well, um, and also water plant improvements, we're trying to look at what all of those would cost, um, I know Jason's been talking to a couple of engineers on those different projects and what they would entail.
We have, um, an engineered design thing for the northwest water pressure, that pressure pump for that.
On Madison Street.
On Madison, so we have.
That was done five years ago.
You know, it was probably that long.
Half a million dollars, last cost estimate.
Yeah. We have the engineers study done, we just didn't know if that was the right thing to do or not, and then they did, and then they said maybe that northwest loop might help with that pressure. And they did, poor volume.
Right.
I, I, I'll throw my personal opinion on this.
We want it.
I do not believe putting in a booster station is the right path. The reason why I say that is that is another mechanical piece of equipment to fail. We can solve the pressure by raising the tower. With what we have determined, when we did the fire out at, or the fire suppression system out at Evaco, we probably need some more capacity up there, so if we're gonna get a bigger bowl for capacity, why don't we raise the tower, which is gonna make it so the tower in up there is not like this. And the tower's here, well, what's gonna happen, you're gonna have more pressure going this way compared to it being level. I think if we're gonna spend the money, we spend the money there and not there. That is my personal opinion, I am not an engineer, but water flow's better downhill and I don't have to worry about a pump failing at two o'clock in the morning.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
And I think the cost difference would probably be fairly similar to add ten, twenty feet to the tower, and it, that's not including a bigger bowl, but to add ten, twenty feet to the tower I think is gonna be about the same price as what it would be to add a booster station.
So, we'll need to, with the expansion of a lot of things that have been happening over the past how many years, fifteen, twenty? Especially the last five or ten, and hopefully continues, you know, we got a locker coming to town, we're gonna have more, if Evaco keeps expanding. We're, we're gonna need more volume, so I think that's, that'd be something great to look into, whatever it costs.
Yeah, cause if you had a fire out of Evaco, and I don't want one by any means, but it would probably drain our tower pretty quickly.
If, if we don't get a heads up on that one right away to kick pumps, we're gonna be fighting a very Mount Everest battle.
Hopefully we never have to worry about, but I, I agree, I agree with your statement, let's fix two problems with one.
Correct, that would be my opinion.
So we kind of talked about this Omni Beacon alarm, um, and we'll look more into that project. Repair speakers, Speaker Park Storm Sewer, I think we figured out today what that, where that might have been, correct?
I believe it's the one intake down there at the lake where it's the metal, the metal's just rotted away. We're gonna end up having to probably either tear up some of the road to replace far enough back. If not completely across the road, in order to do it, it all depends on how far that metal's deteriorated, we shoved a camera up, it was CIT. And we only got about ten foot in, and you see nothing but holes, and we couldn't go any farther.
Are you talking from the Lake, Lake Shore?
From the shore up.
Yep.
Yeah.
If, if that's a project that this is intended for.
We talked about that because it's been a plug-in, it keeps, all the dirt keeps washing in.